Good evening, everyone. This is the Select Board meeting of Wednesday, August 25, 2021. This meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to the Zoom platform pursuant to the Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. And that act was signed by Governor Baker on June 16, 2021. Meeting is also being broadcast live by Milton Access Television and taped by Milton Access Television. My name is Katie Conlon. I'm the Chair of the Board. Could we go around the Zoom room and introduce ourselves, please?
Arthur Doyle, Vice Chair.
Mike Zulis, Secretary.
Richard Wells, Member.
And Melinda, you might have been muted.
Melinda Collins, Member.
Thank you. We're also joined this evening by our Town Administrator, Michael Dennehy. Suzanne Stewart of the Select Board Office. Could we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please? And we'll put the flag up on our Zoom transmission. I think we're just getting the flag up. Here we go. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Before we get started, I'd like to ask the Board's permission to defer three items that are on the agenda this evening. And we do have a very full agenda, so I think it would be good if we can take a couple of items off. They would be Items 10, which relates to an easement agreement for the fire project. I'm told by the Town Administrator that is not yet ready. Item 20, which is the Policy Committee's second reading of the policies. Mr. Zulus has asked us to defer that item. And Item 30, which is the Executive Session on 334 Edch Hill Road. So if there's no objections, we will go ahead and defer those items. And seeing and hearing no objection, okay, those will be deferred. The first item on our agenda is Citizen Speak, or Public Comment, rather. Do we have anyone this evening who would like to address the Board at public comment? If so, please raise your hand through the Zoom platform. I don't see anyone on the telephone. Everyone who's here is an attendee. Do we have anyone for Citizen Speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, we are on to Item 4 on our agenda, which is an introduction of Shane Brandenburg, the new Executive Director of Milton Access Television. And Shane is now joining us by video. Good evening, Shane, and thank you for coming in this evening.
Hi, everybody. How you doing?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I think a lot of you people, everyone here kind of already knows me on the Board for a while. If not, hello. I'm Shane Brandenburg. I've taken over for Michael Lynch. That might be very hard for a bit, but yeah, I'm trying my best.
Well, congratulations on your promotion to this new role. And you've been serving at Milton Access Television, as you said, for almost a decade. You've served as Operations Director and Project or Production Coordinator for Milton Access Television. Do you want to let the Board know a little bit about maybe your plans for the station or some of your experience in the past or anything?
Yeah, we have a couple of big projects coming up. We're trying to make all the rooms, because of last year, we really want to make every room hybrid-ready for meetings because, you know, we've done our best with COVID, but, you know, Delta, so something could happen. But we also noticed that during COVID, because of Zoom, that a lot more people were participating in the meetings, which is what we really, really want in the first place, because Milton is built on town government and people participating. So we're going to be upgrading the Bluetooth Chronim Rooms, and then eventually we'll be upgrading a little bit more into the Council on Aging. So going forward, hopefully January, February, depends on like the project system, the projects. We hope to have everything fully hybrid by 2022. And that's like the real big thing right now. Tom Pillar, some of you already know him as well. He was our Programming Director. He's been promoted to my previous position. So he's an operations, so familiar face, big thing. So we've got to really hire another Director of Programming. So that's the next big thing for us. And yeah, it's really it. Sports kicking in. We'll be getting some stuff up on Ed, filming all that stuff. We're going to do live broadcasts on YouTube, by the way, for a lot of those games. So we'll be posting on our Facebook and Twitter. So make sure you guys pay attention.
Well, that's great. Does anyone from the Board have any questions or comments for Shane? Mr. Dennehy.
No questions per se, but I'm very glad that they're moving to upgrade some of the rooms and understanding the need and the power of remote meetings and the fact that, although in-person meetings do have that personal touch, we're kind of stuck in neutral there for a while. So I love the fact that they're acknowledging this and addressing it because it's so important. And his acknowledgement of town government and how important it is for these meetings and volunteerism. So thank you, Shane, and welcome.
Oh, thank you. And yeah, School Committee on Facebook has been a game changer. We have so many people now involved, so that's why we want to keep this going forward.
Mr. Zulus.
And thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations, Shane. I do note that Michael Lynch is trolling in the attendees, and I don't know what that's all about.
Oh, is he now? Oh, my goodness. Should we promote him?
Let's promote, let's promote Mr. Lynch to see if he has anything that he wanted to weigh in on.
Oh, no, this is when we find out he's on the phone.
Good evening, everyone. Hi. I'm just here in the background just to see the meeting. Hope everyone's doing well. Not officially on the Board yet, so, you know, I wanted to just be here to support Shane, to congratulate him. You guys are in good hands. He's been doing a top-notch job. And just be excited for some of the other things we have in the pipeline that aren't ready just yet, but going forward, we should be, we'll have a great year.
Well, that's great. Thank you, Michael Lynch, for your comments and for all of your service. And glad that you're staying on the Board. And thanks for being here to support Shane Brandenburg in his new role. Anyone else from the Board? Any comments or questions for Shane? Okay, well, then, if not, Shane, as you said, everyone on the Board is familiar with you, a lot of people in the public are, I'm sure, and all the other Boards and Committees. So thanks to the MATV staff for all the great work that you all do and making it possible to reach as many people as we do. So we're looking forward to your exciting new plans and working with you.
Awesome. Thanks, guys, so much.
All right. Thanks for being here tonight. Okay, next on our agenda is a COVID update. We also are following that with a report from the Conservation Commission. And I see we have Chairman John Kiran in here, so I'd like to move that item up if there's no objection from the Board, and we'll come back to the COVID item. And we'll go on to Item 6, which is a report from the Conservation Commission and an update on enforcement orders. So Chairman, Chair John Kiran, thank you for joining us this evening and welcome.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for having me. Tonight is actually informational. We don't expect or not ask you for a vote, but we do have a proposal from the Conservation Commission, which has been discussed in public meeting, most recently at the August 10 meeting of the Conservation Commission. And I have submitted, and I think that if necessary, we can screen share, but I hope that it was all in your packet, that the Conservation Commission has submitted a, the title of it is Wetlands Compliance Enforcement Plan for the Milton Conservation Commission. And I'd like to discuss it very briefly tonight and ask for your response, not formally tonight, perhaps a vote would be appropriate at a different time with a different notification on the agenda. But what I'd suggest is that our proposal is to formalize our enforcement plan. And currently, there is a section of our town bylaw regulations. And I emphasize regulations because the regs are different from the bylaw itself. So I had submitted tonight and asked at a late date that it be included in your packet. I don't know if it was submitted or not. But what I'd like to suggest tonight is that which we have proposed can take three different forms. One is policy, and that policy would be put on the Milton Town website under the Conservation Commission section. And that would be part of our mandate to enhance the education of the public so that everyone knows what we do and what we're supposed to do. The second component or the second vehicle would be to amend the existing regulations. And I refer to Section 7 of the current regulations, which I think you have in your packet. The third vehicle, which is a potential vehicle, would be to amend the bylaw. Now, the difference between amending the regulations and amending the bylaw is that the regulations can be implemented, as I understand it, with the approval of the Select Board. To amend the bylaw would be to require town meeting approval. We, and I speak, there's a consensus among the Conservation Commission members, we do not recommend an amendment to the bylaw, but we do recommend an amendment to the regulations. So if I could parse that which we submitted as the Wetlands Compliance Enforcement Plan, there are different sections that I'd like to address. The first is the introduction. The introduction is a little bit wordy. It's a narrative, and I don't think it's appropriate as part of the regulation. And if you refer to the regulations that currently exist, there is an introduction there, which essentially states what our purpose is in implementing the rules and regulations of the State Wetlands Protection Act, as well as the Milton Town bylaw. So that introduction could go in into our website, the whole thing, actually, could go into the website. But that which I believe should be used to amend the regulation, that would be Section 7 of the current regulations, would begin at where it says the second subheading is Protocol for Issuing a Violation Notice or an Enforcement Order. And significantly, those are two different vehicles for communicating with the public. The notice, violation notice, actually puts the homeowner or the property owner on notice that there is a potential violation. And I emphasize the word potential. We don't know, we're a data collecting entity, and we receive information from citizens, from neighbors, from members of the public who call the Conservation Agent or one of the Conservation Commission members. So we have to investigate that, and that usually requires notification of the property owner and a request for a site visit. So that all would be contained within the violation notice. And again, I emphasize the notice itself says that there may be a violation, a potential violation, as opposed to you've now violated the law. The second would be the enforcement order itself, which is provided under state law. That's not a town issue, but rather a state issue. And that provides for finding that a violation has occurred, an order for remediation, and the potential for sanctions. But that already exists under state law. So this change to the regulations is simply a mechanism by which we implement the state law and the town bylaw. So if you look to the second page, there are additional references. Some of this is informational and belongs in what I call the policy component, which would be on the website. For instance, on the second page and the first and second paragraphs, there are references to attachments. Those references would not be appropriate for the regulation itself. They would be appropriate for the website. And those attachments, they're referred to as Appendix 4 and 5 from the State Manual for Enforcement Orders. So those have been attached. I think you have those in your packet. They don't have to be included necessarily in the regulation change, but they should be referenced in the policy. Again, policy goes to website, regulation goes to the Select Board. And I think that that would assist us all in alerting the public as to what our protocol is. And I submitted this plan for enforcement, and I confess immediately that I took it all, I was going to say stole it, I borrowed it, from the State DEP Manual for Enforcement that is distributed to all Conservation Commissions. So we have a uniform application statewide, which I think is important for us. And we would ask that you consider this, the introduction, staying with the policy on the website, and that which follows the protocol, so that would be the bottom of the first page and the second page, would go as an amendment to the regulation. Now, there's one caveat, and that is the, on the second page, the third paragraph is actually already in the current regulations, so that would not need to be repeated. So if, after, you know, public review and public comment, the Select Board were inclined to agree with the Conservation Commission that this is an appropriate formalization, we would resubmit this in final form, and it would take that paragraph out because that paragraph already exists in the regulations. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to repeat it. And I only have one final comment, and that is, if you look to the existing regulations, if you look to Section 7 entitled enforcement, there are a series, after the first paragraph, there are four, A, B, C, and D, sub-provisions. And I believe that the D requires a further amendment because currently it says, "Any person who violates any provision of the bylaw," and I suggest we should add the language or the Wetlands Protection Act. We're following the state law, we're implementing the state law, so in our regulations, we should reference the state law. It would simply be an add-on, and it's certainly consistent with the intent of the enforcement order. It is a state order. So I entertain any questions, and I will respond to any needs that the Select Board sees.
John, let me ask what your thoughts are in terms of, you mentioned notice to the public and some kind of a public process here. So you've already discussed this at a conservation meeting. You're asking that our Board approve this on behalf of the Conservation Commission. Sounds like what we may want to consider doing is posting this on the website, maybe putting out some kind of an email blast as part of the town email distribution that the Board has this under review. Solicited any public feedback or comment. We may or may not get some comment, but at least it would be some public process. Is that what you had in mind, or did you have something different in mind?
No, I envisioned this meeting tonight as being the first step in a public comment process. And so that I think you're exactly correct. You should invite public response, comments, questions, suggestions. Give whatever 30, 60-day period of time to receive that comment and then revisit the issue for a formal vote.
Okay. All right. We can get the word out through your channels and get it up on the website. Do any members of the Board have questions or comments for Chairman John Kiran? And we should note for the record, Arthur Doyle is a member of the Conservation Commission, and Melinda Collins is a former member of the Conservation Commission. I think Mr. Zulus had his hand up.
I did, Madam Chair. Okay.
Oh, Mr. Wells.
Go ahead, Michael. I just want to say thank you to the Chair. I have a sense of how much work this entails, so, and I know how critical their work is to the quality of life and the preservation of what is so special in this community. So I applaud their efforts and hope that we can help them moving this forward.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
And Mr. Wells, you look like you're in a more interesting place than some of us are.
I don't get to do this very often, but Arthur's always yelling at me that I don't get on my boat enough. It's like I'm actually more to my boat than I'm meaning, thanks to Zoom.
It's a life jacket. You're a brave man.
It's right beside me, Arthur.
That, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, John, and thank you to the Conservation Commission for this effort. One suggestion for consideration, John, in the penultimate paragraph on the second page where it talks about consent, we might want, a suggestion is to perhaps make clear what is implicit, and that is prior consent. So we may just may suggest the word prior, maybe prior consent, or the consent of the property owner shall be solicited prior to conducting a site visit, and then prior consent may be requested in person. Otherwise, you know, you could have a situation where, and I don't know if this is intended, where the group could go up to the homeowner and just seek the consent and then just do it then. I mean, I think, I think, I think the intention is to kind of do it beforehand, if that's the case. So that's a suggestion.
I agree with the point that is the intent, and I agree with your suggestion. And it's easy. In all instances, the prior consent of the property owner should be solicited, just to insert that word in the second time at the end of the next sentence.
Okay, Ms. Collins.
I just wanted to weigh in. I like the idea of doing this through the regulations rather than the bylaw because it's more nimble, and the Conservation Commission should find that it wants to, you know, alter, tweak something, and trying this in the bylaw, I think would be too limited. So thank you for your work on this. I think it's a great step.
But thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Kiran, did you want to just say maybe a few words just to explain for the general public who may be watching, if not live tonight, may watch the tape, just regarding the general role of the Conservation Commission? There's some, you know, residents in town who may be new to the town or maybe aren't new to the town, but just have never really encountered the Conservation Commission. It's a commission that's appointed by this Board. I believe it has seven members, all with a lot of different areas of environmental expertise. And you as a long-serving Chair, and, you know, Arthur Doyle is a long-serving member, we have a lot of very capable people serving in this, on this commission, but could you maybe just give a little background on what the commission does?
Sure. Technically and legally within the statute, it's easy to explain, but it's a little bit more difficult to explain in real terms. I mean, our role and our mandate is to implement the rules and regulations of the State Wetlands Protection Act, which is Chapter 131, Section 40, and the CMR, which is Code of Massachusetts Regulations. There are all kinds of state regulations. And we are essentially a permitting agency to allow for alteration of the wetlands, the resource area, and the buffer zone. So that's, that's the simple way of stating it. But in reality, you know, sort of the practical way is that if you want to, you know, build an addition, or you put in a swimming pool, or put in some tennis courts, or cut some trees, and it's within the jurisdiction, and this is defined by statute, the jurisdiction is measured 100 feet from most of the resource area. Sometimes if it's a river or a perennial stream, it's 200 feet. But within that jurisdictional framework, we are the permitting agency to make any kind of, if an applicant, a homeowner, a property owner wants to make a change or alter that land, and we try to be user-friendly. We try to help people comply with the Wetlands Protection Act rules and regulations as opposed to throwing up obstacles. And that's, I consider that our mandate, our charter, to assist people in complying. The area that I think we perhaps, or I perhaps fall down on, is not educating the public enough so that they know that when they buy a new house, if they're next to a perennial stream, that they're aware of it. And there are certain obligations to go to the town, the Conservation Commission, and ask permission. So I think the website is one area. Another area that I have to tip my hat to Arthur Doyle because he was the driving force for trying to get the Conservation Commission sort of into the curriculum of the public schools so that we could get into the science classes and have some kind of a presentation so that the students at the high school or the middle school could learn a little bit more about this. And this is something that I think we'd like to take on as sort of the next challenge, to assist in educating the public. We had a meeting in July in which a number of members of the public spoke up and said that, look, people move into the town, they don't know. They're not trying to violate the state law or the Milton Town bylaw. They just don't know. So one of the suggestions was we get to the Realtors and assist them in alerting potential buyers that there is a stream. It's something to be protected. It's a natural resource. And you, as the new homeowner, will have an obligation to do that. Now, I think that's part of our outreach obligation as well, to reach out to the Realtors. I'm not sure that they'd be happy about that because some prospective purchases might think that that was a burden rather than a benefit. But that's another avenue of education. And certainly, the town website is the perfect platform to have new people coming into town and folks that have been here for a long time that didn't realize, A, that they're next to a natural resource, and B, they have a responsibility to protect it. So I guess education is the key to what we should be doing. The obvious role that we play is to permit these projects and help people comply with the dictates of the state law and the town bylaw.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Dennehy.
Along those lines, Mr. Kiran, and thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair. How can the town help? How can the Select Board Office help? Is there a message that we could help you get out to people? We do have a lengthy list of subscribers to our news feed and other listservs that we achieve through town government, but just wondering if there's a message, standard message we could send out to people.
I think there is, and the website is the most obvious, but the news feed would be another one. For instance, this, you know, proposed amendment to the regulation could be part of the, it could go to the, you know, the newspaper, the media, particularly the electronic media because everybody seems to utilize that nowadays. So the website with a link to the news feed would be very beneficial. There were certain town events where the Conservation Commission could be, somebody on behalf of the Conservation Commission could just stand up and say, this is, this is part of what we do, we're trying to protect this beautiful resource. As a matter of fact, the other day, we, Arthur and Hans Van Lingen, and I appeared at the Pine Tree Brook for a ribbon cutting for an Eagle Scout who had put up a message board in the area of Parkway Crescent, and that was the Pine Tree Brook Association that was there. And there were probably, I don't know, Arthur, 35 people, some 30 people, maybe, who were present in the neighborhood. The Neighborhood Association organized it. And so the conservation got some credit. Of course, all the credit went to the young Eagle Scout, but there were folks there. I think it was in The Times, Desmond was there, and I think she wrote an article or was about to write an article about this. But that's, that's the kind of publicity that we need to assist in the education.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Wells.
Just one question for Chairman Kiran. John, do you have a timeline where you'd like us to have us all done and completed and brought into reality? Do you have like a window of what you'd like to see this timeline, where you'd like to see it be, how soon?
I'm not sure how long it will take it to get it into the press, so to speak, or on the website, but we need at least 30 days for public comment. If you would like longer than that, then so be it. But I would suggest 30 days from the date that it goes in to the press for public comment, and we could then submit a formal application for a vote the following month. So the whole thing could be done within 60 days.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Collins and Mr. Doyle had their hands up. Ms. Collins?
Chair, just one thing that might, might help, if we can get people to the website, maybe a link to the online GIS so that people can look at their properties and know that that's a service that the town provides. I know that when I wanted to put a fence up in my new backyard, that was really useful before coming to the Conservation Commission.
That, that's a great point, and Alan Bishop, I have to tip my hat to him. He's been superb in getting us information. When an applicant comes in, the first thing we do is turn to Alan Bishop and say, tell us, show us where it is, tell us what it looks like. So that's, that's a great idea.
Hey, Mr. Doyle?
You, Madam Chair, I just wanted to add that one of the difficult areas that we have to deal with on the Conservation Commission is when there's a violation of a pre-existing order of conditions. And they, of course, fund with the land, and maybe one of the things that we could consider, John, is the possibility of speaking with the Registrar of Deeds who puts out notifications periodically that we see printed in the newspapers and have something that would come into the public domain about the relationship to conservation. That might minimize those instances where people, you know, have acquired a property and maybe not, inadvertently not paid attention to some of the conservation restrictions that are in the existing deed.
Yeah, that, that's a great point. Actually, I don't know if this is a good story or a bad story, but we had a, a property owner that was cited for a violation in 1997 and again in 1998, and he, he just refused to, to remedy it. So we eventually fined him when the home was sold, and I think 2014. And it was the largest fine that I'm aware of in any town, it was $75,000 that came into the, the town coffers. Because it is exactly as Arthur said, it ran with the land. So it couldn't be removed for the new homeowner, and so it, it became part of the purchase price. And the, the, the point is that it did run with the land, and eventually it was, it was remedied. But it did take the fact that it was recorded with the Registry of Deeds, which we did back in 97 and 98, and then it popped up. It, the homeowner was, was sort of immune, I guess, or he felt he was immune until he wanted to sell the property. So that's the way we actually enforced it, and it was actually through the Registry of Deeds. That was, that was the mechanism by which we, A, fixed the problem, and B, received the fine. So I'm agreeing with you, Arthur. I think we, we do need to reach out, make sure that we have a clear path to, A, record, and B, perhaps publicize the fact that there's a, an enforcement order.
Okay, well, I, I think this has been good information and hopefully educational for a lot of residents of the town. And we have some next steps here for publisher, publishing, publicizing, excuse me, the notice of the, the new regulation and getting some public input and hopefully drawing some greater attention to this important role that the Conservation Commission plays. Is, if there's nothing else for John Kieran, then I think we can thank him for joining us this evening and go on to our next agenda item.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all the work that you do.
Well, same to you, Mr. Kieran, and thank you to you and the members of the commission, because it's, I, I know you, you're out there on Saturday mornings, at least once a month, often, you know, walking through swampy areas, and I, I remember one meeting that I was at on a Saturday where the town planner, the Conservation Commission came in to join us, was on the Henry's Project, and you all came in and you were brushing the ticks off you because you had been at a walk somewhere that, that involved a lot of wildlife. So I was glad I was not there and not having to worry about getting ticks off me for that. But I, it's, it's not a matter of just sitting around a conference table, it's, you're out there on the ground, you're, you're tra, traipsing through a lot of conditions that require you to put on boots and, and rain gear, and, and you're out there all times of the year. So it's, it's a big commitment of time and effort, and we're very grateful for all that you do.
Thank you. And I should just add that in our last sidewalk on the 14th of August, Wendy Gapo was stung by four or five hornets while she was out in the, in the wilderness. So that happens as well. Thank you all and.
All right, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Very helpful. Okay, we have a few guests who are here in the attendee group for subsequent items. What's the wish of the board? Do we want to go back to COVID or move on to some of the other items where we have people who are here to join us this evening? We have the town treasurer who's here for item seven, which I'm going to be recused on, which is a bonding issue. We also have an applicant here for common vet license on item eight. Shall we take those two and then go back to the COVID update?
Yes.
That'll be fine.
Okay, then why don't we go on to number seven, and I'm going to be recused on this. Mr. Doyle will act as the chair for this item. I'll turn off my video and audio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item seven, discussion approval, Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, the Local Water Systems Assistance Program, the MWRA sewer bond. And Mr. Dennehy, we have town treasurer, Jim McCullough with us. Mr. McCullough?
I'm going to ask you to vote tonight on a bond for $1,150,000. It's a sewer bond. It's from the MWRA, it's a zero-interest bond, and it's paid over 10 years at $115,000 per year. We usually borrow water at this time also, but we're going to use the opera funds, I'm told, to take care of the water bill this year. So we're just looking for the $1,150,000.
We have a motion on the table. Mrs. Zulus, could I turn to you as the secretary clerk to make the motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. I move that the sale of the 1.15 million sewer bond of the town dated September 13, 2021 to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority is hereby be approved, and the town treasurer or other appropriate town official be authorized to execute on behalf of the town a loan agreement and the financial assistance agreement, financial assistance agreement with the authority with respect to the bond. The bond shall be payable, and that the bond shall be payable without interest on August 15 of the years in the principal amounts as follows. For the year 2022, the installment $115,000. For year, for the year 2023, the installment of $115,000. And, and let me just say, I, I'll just add, for the years 2024, or for the years 2022 through 2031, the installments are all $115,000. So I can collapse that part of the, part of the motion. And further, that each member of the Select Board, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are, be authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing vote.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion, we're open for discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will entertain a roll call vote. Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Passes by a vote of four with Chair Conlon abstaining.
And Arthur, the paperwork is with Susie Stewart to be signed tomorrow. So we just need three signatures on it. The town clerk, myself, and the town accountant have already signed it.
So Jim, missed you at the front, and you would like three of us to be there tomorrow to sign?
Yeah, I need three out of the five to sign it tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'm going in to sign two other things tomorrow, so I'll make sure I'm there to sign in the morning.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
I can, I can get in there as well, probably by 9:30.
And I'll do the same tomorrow morning for us then.
Yeah, I, I can as well if there's a problem, but.
Okay, well said. Thank you. Very much, and now Chair has returned.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Doyle. Item eight on our agenda is a common vetlor application for PB Milton LLC doing business as Playables at 532 Adams Street. Mr. Zulus?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'm going to recuse on this matter. As turns out that one of my partners is the trustee for the landlord and signed the lease for the landlord. It's a tangential connection, but it's a connection nonetheless, and I'm going to recuse on this matter and leave the meeting until we move on to the next item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zulus. Okay, so we are joined this evening by Mr. Lam and Ms. Nanton. I hope I'm pronouncing your names correctly, or the, here on behalf of the applicant. I believe this is a, notice has been given in the Milton Times of this meeting this evening, and you're applying for a common vetlor license through the end of this calendar year, December 31st. So would you like to introduce yourselves to the board and discuss your application? And then the board may have some questions and comments, and we'll see if there's anyone from the public here this evening who has any questions.
All right.
Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thanks for having us. I'll, I'll get started. My name's Hung Lam. I am one of the managing partners of Playables. And then Dana, if you want to introduce yourself?
Yep. Hi, I'm Dana Nanton. I am one of the other managing partners of Playables as well.
Yeah, just a little bit of background on us. So we, so there's four partners. We are actually all friends from Boston College. So I actually grew up right down the street in Dorchester, and I live on, I live in Milton now, right on Brook Road. So this, so this will be our fourth shop. So we started off with our first one at Boston College, right across from the campus. And then it did really well, so we moved on and we opened up one at Northeastern and then one at Harvard as well. And then now I was hoping to bring it, you know, closer to home, to something that I believe is well-needed in Milton. Just a little bit about the business, it's called Playables. So what we would be selling is acai bowls, pata bowls, oatmeal, juices, and smoothies. So it's all healthy alternatives that, you know, that we would have there. We'll also have, you know, some bottled juices as well. So living close by, I kind of, you know, we had a little lack of some healthy food. So once my neighbors found out that I, I own the Playables in Boston, they're like, why don't you bring one to Milton? And, you know, I, you know, wasn't really, you know, on our thought process for a little while, but then I was like, you know what, I think that'd be a great idea. So that's, that's where we're at right now, and we're in front of you guys, hoping that we get the, the okay to, to open up.
Okay, and you're, the, the building is under reconstruction at, at this time. What, what are your, what is your timing?
Sure, so, so our building is right next to Mr. Chan's. It's, it's the old DuHollow Building, or the DuHollow Space. So we're working on it right now. So directly next door is the big project that's, that's going on right now. But for our space, we actually just got the rough inspections done this week by the town, and all of that went really well. We've worked, we've been working with the sign people as well. We had another meeting similar to this, so they gave us the, the green light on that. We're hoping if all goes well, we can open, you know, the middle to end of September.
Okay, thank you. Do, do members of the board have questions for Mr. Lam or Ms. Nanton?
No, but Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Mr. Wells?
So my youngest, Molly, who gave me the, all the 911 and the 411, all the 411, I'm sorry, on business yesterday, could not be more excited. So good luck. I think this is something that all the health eaters in Milton, I got to truly appreciate for our community and something that'll be another positive. So good luck with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, another piece too, is that we actually hire a handful of Milton students at our other shops, so we're going to transfer them over. And then we're most likely going to, 80 to 90% of our staff is going to be, you know, the younger population, high schoolers, college kids. When they, they come back and we have a manager there. I also live literally two minutes away, so I'll be present there and hopefully creating a really good environment for the young folks from both Quincy, Milton, and, and Dorchester. So that's our goal, along with, you know, providing a good, healthy food option for everyone.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Collins?
I, I was very excited when I saw 30 jobs being added, and, you know, I really, I worked in fast food, not healthy. So I, I realized that they're, you know, probably mostly part-time positions, but, and people need jobs too, so I was really excited about that. And I have a completely selfish question. Can you get oatmeal all day?
You can, absolutely.
Okay, very excited, thank you.
I, I had a question for you about the hours that you're looking to operate. You, you've indicated on your application, you'd like to operate each day, seven days a week, from 7:00 AM until 11:00 PM, and my question is more around the closing time than the opening time. It is a commercial district, but some of the businesses nearby, like Mr. Chan's and Peel Pizza or House of Pizza, close earlier than 11:00. So I looked, looked some of them up, they were in the 8:30, 9:00, 10:00 timeframe. Could you speak to that? Obviously, one of the concerns of the board would be precedent and treating different businesses unequally. So I think that's something we'd probably like to hear a little bit more about.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll take this one. Yeah, so we'll make it easy. So we, we close at nine o'clock. So we're, we're open from 8:00 AM till nine. I think when we just applied, we just weren't, you know, sure. So we just, you know, we put it till 11:00. But yeah, we plan on closing at nine. That's what our other shops are. We're, you know, we have, we don't have an interest of that late night crowd or anything like that. We'll close at that nine o'clock.
Yeah, to give you some precedence too, so some of the Playables outside of Massachusetts, they open a little bit later. And so just why we applied, having that flexibility, but our plan is to, to be open until nine.
Okay, if you're willing to do 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, I mean, I, I as one member of the board would be more comfortable with that. And this, any license that we grant tonight would expire at the end of the year. If this was something that you found you were, you had a lot of demand later in the evening and you wanted to revisit that, that could be revisited certainly at the time the license has expired or at some other time, you know, if it makes sense business-wise and for you to come back in. But, but thank you, I think that would be helpful. Does anyone else on the board have any comments or questions? Let me see if there's anyone in the attendee group who has any, if, if there is anyone this evening who would like to ask a question or make a comment on the application, please indicate by raising your hand. I see no telephone callers for the, for the general public's benefit. It's star nine on the telephone to raise your hand, but there's no one on the phone this evening. Okay, I see no hands raised, so it's, it's just the board. So is there anything else that you would like to add before we close the evidence portion of the meeting? Okay, anyone else, anything, anything else from the board or Mr. Dennehy? Okay, then why don't we close the evidence? Do we have a motion to close the evidence? And I'll second the motion. All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So we've closed the evidence, so let's have a discussion. If anyone would like to make a motion or if anyone on the board has any thoughts?
Madam Chair, I would move to approve a common vetlor license for PB Milton LLC doing business as Playables at 532 Adams Street through December 31st, 2021.
And could we, just as a friendly amendment, with the hours of 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM daily? If we can include that in them.
7:00 AM?
I thought it's at 8:00 AM, but I was more, I was more concerned about the, the ending time. Let's just clarify.
Were 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
I had something different.
Okay. Mr. Lam and Ms. Nanton, was that agreeable to you?
Yes.
8:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
9:00 PM.
Okay, so Arthur, if you accept that as a friendly amendment, we can make that part of the vote. Okay, if there's no other discussion, I should just state for the record, we, we do have a copy of your lease, and you've submitted all the required paperwork, so thank you for that. All in favor of the motion made by Mr. Doyle? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So thank you very much. Good luck. Congratulations. We're excited to have a new business in the square. And I'm sure you'll have a lot of people, I've already seen some social media posts, so I'm sure you'll have a lot of people interested in how quickly you might be opening, so.
Have a special maroon and gold drink that you want.
We should, we should.
Some of us might be in just for that. Ms. Collins will be in for the oatmeal, maybe I will as well, but if there's a. Ms. Collins will be in for the oatmeal. Maybe I will as well, but if there's a maroon, maroon and gold drink, Mr. Doyle and I might like to go in for that. Mr. Doyle, Mr. Doyle, in his, earlier in his career, was the director of admissions at B C.
Oh, wow.
Had a lot of affinity and, and relationship with the school.
That's where I got my MBA.
Ah, Ms. Collins as well, that's right. I haven't thought about that, Ms. Collins, my apologies.
I'm in the middle of that right now. I've got a long ways to go, but I just started getting my MBA there. So it'll be fun.
Yes.
We have an idea.
Practical experience to apply, which really makes.
Well, you better push for your hot cocoa to go with your oatmeal and make sure you get that on the, on the agenda.
All right. Well, thank you so much and good luck with the business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks. And I should also acknowledge Jenna from McCullough, who's the licensing agent at Town Hall, and thank her for her efforts on this matter. Okay, we'll wait for Mr. Zulus to come back. Let me see.
Here, here I am.
Oh, there he is, Mr. Zulus. Okay, I think the others who are here are here for a later item on the Governor Stoughton. So why don't we continue on with our agenda? And we'll go back to the COVID update. I believe we're going to go to Mr. Dennehy to begin this discussion and update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I would like to announce, we've been putting it out through social media and on the town's website, and we've talked about it both at the Finance Committee and at this board's previous meetings. This Sunday, August 29th, the town is going to revisit COVID testing, and we will host a free drive-through COVID testing day from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Department of Public Workshop at 629 Randolph Avenue. This is open to all members, not necessarily of Milton, but all communities, surrounding communities, people that work in the town, people that, you know, commute through the town, anyone that's in Milton on Sunday, feel free to drive through. You don't have to show proof, proof of identification. You will have to fill out a form. Similar, it's very successful last spring and fall and winter, in fact, over 6,600 tests administered. So we, we see what's out there. We, we see it on the news. We see it locally and federally. So we think it's a very good time with people returning to the fall normalcy, whether it's school or work. This will be the first of several free testing days to come through the fall season. We haven't picked a date for the next one, but probably sometime, maybe after Labor Day or during the holidays. We saw a very large uptick last year around the holidays, both before and after, and people's concern about spending time with people in large groups, both before and after. So again, this Sunday, August 29th, free drive-through COVID test day, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Public Workshop, 629 Randolph Avenue. And again, all are welcome. So we hope people show up, get tested, and hopefully negatively. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dennehy. And I know that you and Caroline Cancelle, the Health Director, are tracking the daily numbers. We do not have Ms. Cancelle available this evening, but, and Mr. Dennehy, I don't know if you have any update on the numbers from the Health Department?
I don't have a most recent update.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Item 5B is just an update on what the Board of Health has done. The Board of Health met almost a week ago and approved an order, issued an order, requiring face coverings or masks for anyone who's a visitor to Town Hall. It takes effect this Friday, the 27th. So I, I think it's probably a first step, because the Board of Health is meeting again on August 30th next week. They have a posted agenda already, in which they, one of the items on their agenda relates to additional regulations relating to face coverings. So as all of us know and have been following in the news, many communities, including the City of Boston, have adopted measures that require face coverings for any indoor location, including businesses, restaurants, not just municipal buildings. So we wanted to at least give an update on what the Board of Health has done and what their, what their current order is effective as of Friday, with the acknowledgement that they may be taking additional action and to see if there's any discussion that our board would like to have on that item, anything that we might like to suggest to the Board of Health or pass along, or just a general discussion of their existing order. So we'll open it up to any discussion on this item. And if we don't, that's fine as well. We can, we can get an update from the Board of Health next week and have a further discussion. Mr. Zulus?
So Madam Chair, I, I would point out, just in terms of considerations for the board, I, I think that the board properly noted the CDC's July 27th order or advisory for vaccinated persons in areas of substantial and high transmission to wear a mask while indoors, anywhere indoors. And under the current order, starting Friday, you know, it only covers visitors in municipal buildings. And so you have a circumstance where if I go into a municipal building, I'll be wearing a mask under this order. But any employee who passes me by won't be wearing a mask. So there's a little, perhaps a little disconnect there. And, and you mentioned the City of Boston's, where, while we don't need to always follow the City of Boston's order, the Boston order, you know, it requires face masks, as you noted, to be, to be required in all indoor public settings. And it, it specifies restaurants, stores, gyms, theaters, museums, and performance spaces. It does make exceptions to removing the mask when the person is eating or drinking. It does make exemption, exception for musical live performances, that those performing can take off their masks if they're six feet away. And it also says that the mandate doesn't apply to offices, buildings, or businesses that are not open to the public, and doesn't apply to places of worship, outdoor events, gatherings, and private residences where no compensation is paid, or in events, or events held inside a tent or a temporary structure, where at least one side of the structure is completely open. So it's a little bit more, I think in that respect, a little bit more protective and maybe in line, a little more in line with the, with the CDC advisory that, that our Board of Health cited in their order.
Yes, I, I agree. Any, anyone else? Any other thoughts? Okay, then if not, we could, you know, we could reach out to the Health Director or the Chair of the Board of Health and, you know, let them know we've, we had some discussion around Boston's requirements, and we'll look forward to what, what additional actions they may take next week.
Madam Chair, we just might want to know if I may that viewer is posted on the town website, if anybody wants to access it there?
Yes, I think it's also been put out through social media, but it is up on the website. And, you know, it's helpful information. And this is something that we all thought at the end of May, early June, we were starting a little COVID in the rearview era, and now it's back. And speaking personally, I was fully vaccinated and I, you know, was one of the breakthrough COVID cases, where I luckily had minimal symptoms, virtually no symptoms, but tested positive after coming into contact with someone who had also been vaccinated, who tested positive. So this is out there. It's, it's real, and it's, it's something we all have to be mindful of. Unfortunately, we're going in the wrong direction, I guess nation-wide, but also in our immediate area, in our state, in our locality. So something for us all to be thinking about. Ms. Collins has her hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the thing that's been on my mind has been increasing vaccination rates. I think we're doing pretty well in Milton. I think on this state website, there, it's like 83% children 12 to 15 have been vaccinated. And then it's in the 50% range for 16 to 19-year-olds. And I don't know actually what, what the adults are, but I, I'd be interested in finding ways to encourage that, you know, within our town. I just, I really appreciate Mr. Dennehy having brought testing here. I think that's a, a really big, important piece of the puzzle. And, and of course, thank everybody who's involved in that, but, you know, it was, it was his idea, and that's really helped. But the, the other piece to support the testing piece is, you know, getting vaccinated.
And we should note, the School Department is holding a vaccination program this Saturday. So we have not only the testing on Sunday, we're going to have it through the school system vaccination clinic or vaccination program on Saturday that is also available to Milton residents. And the vaccinations do, they, they do help mitigate symptoms. So they may not fully prevent transmission, as had been originally thought. At least they are mitigating symptoms for many people who, who do test positive after getting the vaccine. All right, so why don't we perhaps convey our thoughts this evening to the Board of Health? And hopefully we'll see what action may, what additional actions may be taken next week. Okay. I think that brings us now to item nine, which is a contract with C T Technology. This relates to the take rate survey for the Municipal Broadband Committee. So I'll ask Mr. Zulus if he has any comments he'd like to make on this topic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the board has approved the appropriation, and the proposal by the vendor has been put into the form of a contract by Town Council, has been agreed to by Town Council in this form and by the vendor. And so it is before us to approve the contract for the appropriation that we've already approved. So I will move to authorize the Town Administrator to sign and move forward with the C T C Technology and Energy Contract to perform the take rate survey as described in Exhibit A of the proposal dated June 25th, 2021.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, then all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you. That is approved unanimously.
And that second goes to Mr. Wells.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Doyle?
The second goes to Mr. Wells. We had chimed in at the same time.
Oh, I see. The second to the motion. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was for Susie. Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Item 11, we have a Kino Monitor application relating to Milton Food Mart. This is the Massachusetts State Lottery has offered the installation of a Kino Monitor for Milton Food Mart, 133 Brook Road. I don't see anyone in the attendee group who may be here this evening for this item, but I'll just ask, if anyone is here for the Kino application for 133 Brook Road, Milton Food Mart, please raise your hand. And seeing none, I checked with Jenna from McCullough, the licensing agent, who confirmed for me that notice of tonight's hearing was given to the applicant. And it was also advertised locally in the Milton Times by the Lottery Commission. So as this, this board knows, in the past, when this issue has come up, in 2018, this board objected to a Kino Monitor for this site. And in the past, the board has objected to other Kino Monitor sites, specifically the 7-Eleven locations in town. So the question for the board, if we, if we do want to object, we would need to do so within 20 days of receiving the letter, which just came in this past week, or probably the end of last week. So we have a short window of time here in which we'd have to make an objection. And in the past, we've authorized Town Council to submit a letter in objection citing specifically for this location in the past, the proximity to a school, it's a residential neighborhood, there are factors such as that, that we've talked about for this site just three years ago. So why don't we open it to discussion and see what, what the members' thoughts are on this application or offer? Or if anyone would like to make a motion. Mr. Doyle has his hand raised.
Madam Chair, move to authorize Town Council to submit a written objection to the offer from the Massachusetts State Lottery Commission to install a Kino Monitor at the Milton Food Mart, 133 Brook Road.
Second.
Hey, any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells.
I'm sorry. So my thoughts have not changed at all since 2018. I don't know if you personally have reviewed that 2018 lineup. I think basically all the same concerns that existed then would be the same ones that would exist now.
Speaking individually, I agree with you, Mr. Wells. Any other comments on the motion? Then if seeing none, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, we're moving right along. Item 12, 12 and 13, we're going to have our Assistant Town Planner, Allison Quinn. I don't believe she's here yet. Is that still the plan, Mr. Dennehy? Oh, we have a hand raised. So Zoom 1. Susie, if we could move up Zoom 1, that may be Allison. I thought that was M A T V, but.
No, it's me. I'm not sure why I'm Zoom 1.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us, Allison. Mrs. Allison Quinn, our Assistant Town Planner is here on item 12, which relates to two affordable housing units at 92 Brush Hill Road. Ms. Quinn?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Select Board members. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to give you a quick bit of an update on 92 Brush Hill Road. We have received notification from the third-party lottery agent, which is S E B, that they are ready to apply, or at least start the application process to the Department of Housing and Community Development for two of the six required units for the Great Estates Plan Unit Development Special Permit. The application requires that the Select Board sign on as kind of co-applicants. The, the units aren't ready to be marketed. That having been said, the process can take a little bit of back and forth with the D H C D. So it made sense to have these kind of run concurrently as they're working on the units and as they apply for, to the D H C D, to have these units on the subsidized housing inventory. So that is the, the reason why I am here tonight. I did submit a draft letter, should the Select Board in town decide that they want to invoke their right to request that we have a local preference. In this case, that would only be applicable to one of the units, because there's only two units going live. That is still a draft. My boss, Tim Zerwinski, is working on a draft of a policy that he will be backing up with some research and data that we've collected toward, you know, our, our position and the status of a town when it comes to affordable housing. But for right now, we're only really talking about these two units. So I thought it was, you know, it was pertinent to put it on your radar, but also ask you if you were comfortable with moving forward an application with S E B for the lottery for those two units.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Quinn. Does anyone from the board have a question or a comment for Ms. Quinn? Ms. Collins?
This is very exciting. Three of us have actually worked on these units, along with our Assistant Planner and the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Committee. So Mr. Doyle and myself, and we're going to be getting two very high-quality units, while everyone would probably like to see them on-site. That's not what the permit calls for. And, and it's been a good, a good working relationship, thanks to Ms. Quinn, and a good process. So I'm, S E B is very well-respected, and I'm, I'm ready to move forward.
I would just like to add to what Ms. Collins said. I actually did not have much of a role in that, but, but certainly Melinda and Arthur did, but also the other members of the committee, Kathleen O'Donnell, Tom Callahan, Julie Kramer. If I, if I have to recite the names, I'm probably going to miss people down here, I feel. So certainly, there was a group that went through and toured this property. I was not at that site visit, but that, Ms. Collins has reported on that previously, and that yielded a lot of areas where the town, acting through Ms. Quinn and the members of the committees and the developer, made some additional improvements to these properties, which had been improved, but were further improved as a result of that process. So that's been, I, I think, worth the public noting, that a lot of effort has gone into getting these units in good shape for, for two affordable units in town. So thank you to everyone who's participated in that process. Ms. Collins, I probably left names off.
Well, no, but you, you, you did, you did mention Julie Kramer, and she, she really did a lot of work. Of course, she's in the Affordable Housing Development, so her expertise is, is really bold and. Of course, she's in Affordable Housing Developers, so her expertise is, is really bold and, and she's, I think she might be here.
We have both Julie Kramer and Kathleen O'Donnell here for the Governor Stoughton item. If they would like to speak to this, feel free to please raise your hand, and we'll move you up to panelists. They may not, they may just want to speak Governor Stoughton matter. So I see no hands raised. Is there anyone else on the Board who has a question or a comment for Ms. Quinn or would like to make a motion?
Let's vote. I think, I think Ms. Collins should make the motion, Madam Chair.
I agree.
I'd be happy to. I move to approve and sign the local access application for two affordable units at 92 Brush Hill Road under the requirements relating to Walt Cutler's project. It's actually north and residential.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wells. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins? Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And Ms. Conlon, yes. Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much, Ms. Quinn. And you're also going to stay with us for item 13, which is a report on the first meeting of the Community Preservation Committee. And Mr. Doyle may want to chime in on this as well. He was at that committee meeting on behalf of the Board.
We had a very, very, what I would qualify as productive first meeting. The committee has a really good range of people with different skills and different expertise that seem like they're going to really have a lot of, to lend to the committee. We've decided that we will request Stuart Saginaw, he is the Director of the Community Preservation Coalition, to come in and train the committee members. He's on vacation until the Tuesday after Labor Day. So we'll schedule it for some time after that. And then we will pick up where we left off in October. And everyone's fairly excited. We went over the rules, the regulations. The next steps that the committee has to do is to adopt a community preservation plan. And I, I'm fairly excited about this. It's, you know, I think for Milton, it was kind of a grind to get the CPA money. But you did, and I think everyone's really, really excited about the next steps. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to share with you what a great committee you guys appointed and how excited everyone is to get some projects going in.
That's terrific. Mr. Doyle, did you want to add anything?
I'll just add, if I may, two things. One is the seriousness of purpose with which the committee has taken their charge. It was extremely impressive. We have a dedicated committee, and I'm sure that we're going to have very positive results from their dedicated work. And the second is I want to compliment Allison Quinn on her facilitating skills. She really did great service to the committee and to the town.
Well, I appreciate that, Arthur. Unnecessary, but appreciated. I think everyone did a good job.
All right, I'll take it back.
I watched the tape, so I'll second that. So well done, Ms. Quinn. And thank you. Thank you for all of your efforts.
Thanks again, and have a wonderful night.
Okay, thanks very much for coming in tonight. Thank you for waiting. Item 14 is a discussion of town meeting articles. We have a request from the Planning Board to withdraw the cut-and-fill bylaw amendment article that they, they've already voted to withdraw this article, is my understanding. And we've alerted the Warrant Committee to that, so we would just need a vote since we were the board that votes what to put in and take out of the warrant. We would need a vote to withdraw the cut-and-fill bylaw. I believe it's Article Two, Article Two from the warrant, cut-and-fill bylaw from the Planning Board.
Is the warrant still open, Madam Chair?
It's not, but the warrant was closed. But, you know, the Planning Board is the one that submitted this article. And generally, we defer to the board that submits an article. So we can go ahead and withdraw it.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair. Although I thought I heard Michael's voice. Michael, you want to say something first?
No, I was, I was, I was, I was going to make the motion, but I'll be pleased to second, second you.
Okay, well, there.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of withdrawing the article. Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mrs. Zulus.
Yes.
Ms. Collins. Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, we have the, we've listed all of the articles on the agenda in case anyone would like to discuss any of them. We have met with the Warrant Committee, most of them. The general bylaw revision article, we have it on the agenda for potential withdrawal. But this may be something we want to refer to the Finance Committee. Mr. Dennehy and Bob Bushway in the Assessor's Office have been looking at the new growth number for the current year, and we may have some, like, there may be some change in that number in a positive light that would offset some of the reduction in the state aid, which was approximately $47,000. And may, so we may be able to revisit this article as to whether we might even be in a position to increase budgets. And I think this might be something to refer to the Finance Committee on a fairly, with a, hopefully a fairly quick turnaround, because the warrant does need to go to print in September. And we'd want to give the Warrant Committee a little time to meet in early September on this article. So if that's something the Finance Committee might be willing to take up at your next meeting, which is Mr. Zulus and Mr. Doyle, working with the town administrator and the assessors, maybe you could come back to us with a proposal.
It's on the draft agenda, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Does anyone?
We're meeting on September 2nd, so that should, it looks like we'll be meeting on September 2nd. So we should have something for you before the September 8th meeting.
Okay, terrific. Is there any discussion on any of the other articles? Anyone would like to bring anything up? Mr. Zulus?
Madam Chair, just a highlight on the, on the request for appropriation of monies from the PEG Access and Cable-related fund. I think it's fair to say that there was a positive reception from the Warrant Committee on that, but they did not vote because they're waiting for the number. And the Municipal Broadband Committee has not recommended a number. And yet, we're trying to get some more information about the history of the, the PEG Access Fund. How, over what period of time, the $750,000 has accumulated? How often there have been withdrawals from it? What the amounts have been? So we can make a, a well.
Informed.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Well-informed recommendation on what that number should be. So Broadband Committee meets next Monday morning. If we have that information, maybe we'll be in a position to vote a recommendation and then present that to the Warrant Committee Monday night and then to this Board on the 8th.
Okay, great. Good news. Anything else on town meeting articles from anyone? Then we'll move right along to the Finance Committee Report Number 15, and I'll go to Mr. Zulus for an update on the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item is the American Rescue Plan Act Update. The Finance Committee voted unanimously, both Mr. Doyle and myself, to recommend to this Board that $1 million of the $1.44 million that we have received be used for the sewer and water project that Mr. Dennehy outlined at our last meeting. And so our recommendation is to use those funds. We have some, as this Board knows, last Tuesday night, we received some resident input we, for the remaining funds that, that will be coming down the pike. So I think the Finance Committee will be in the process of, of trying to allocate those additional, the additional $400,000 that we have, and then the, the funding that we expect to receive this fall from the county and then subsequently next year from, directly from the government and from the county. But I'll defer to Mr. Doyle for anything else on ARPA.
I agree. I think you covered it well, Mr. Zulus.
So, so I would request that we, we put this on, well, number one, I request that, to see if we have a positive sense from the Board in favor of that, that recommendation. It's not on for a vote, and I'd request that we put it on for a vote on September 8th. And that would be a request to act on the recommendation to appropriate $1 million of the ARPA funds for that sewer and water project.
Any discussion by the members on that?
We can't vote this tonight.
It's not on our agenda for a vote, but I, but I think Mr. Zulus would at least like to look at what, what the sense of the Board is. So if we could, to the extent the members are willing to weigh in this evening, we did have a public meeting on the, the ARPA funds last week. We did get some public input on a number of items. And there are additional monies available.
I'm far, I'm, I'm ready to vote, so if we can get on the next agenda, Madam Chair, I think that'd be great.
Okay. And, and to the Finance Committee, you know, I, I support your request. So to the extent that you need to begin any work on this prior to the 8th, which is our next meeting, you know, if everyone is in agreement, then I think we could put it on for formal vote, but share our thoughts tonight. So we give the town administrator and the Finance Committee some guidance as to what the majority of the full Board wishes. Ms. Collins?
I, I agree with that.
Okay, so we'll put that on for a vote on the 8th. The Norfolk County ARPA and the CARES Act.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, Mr. Dennehy has been working closely with the Norfolk County Commissioners. And I think the current projection is to, to, that the town expects to receive half of the $5.5 million allocated from Norfolk County sometime in October. And with the restrictions that, with perhaps some additional restrictions. But Mike, you may want to fill in a little bit more since you've been working this issue.
Sure. Thank you, Members Zulus. That, that's a very good recap. I did attend a remote meeting, myself and Chase Berkeley. Finance Director Karen Pevall was indisposed with Barbara Costa as they work on the year-end stuff. But in essence, we're going to be talking next Thursday at the Finance Committee meeting regarding the tri-county model, similar to the way that this Board worked through the process. The Norfolk County Commissioners announced, and County Director John Cronin and Bill Buckley did a great job of discussing how it was going to take, take place and the review process, which is ultimately a five-step process of compliance and review before funds will be approved and submitted to the town. So they're going to take a look at applications the same way this Board did. Are they going to vet them and then issue funding to us accordingly? So it's a little bit of a change, and, and there was a presentation that I received and disseminated to this group from Monday's remote meeting. Very, very well-attended. I think Milton is in a very good place, both with the funding that we received from the federal government directly and the plan to spend that money and also a plan going forward to work with Norfolk County in this tri-county model, which also refers to Bristol and Plymouth. The Plymouth County, as, as many of you know, received direct funding for CARES and disseminated it to their communities. So there's a lot of best practices involved with that. But there, there is a system that they're going to put in place. We'll talk about it on next Thursday preliminarily with the Finance Committee, and then I'll bring it back to this Board on September 8th and be ready for that fall rollout of, of funding as, as Members Zulus mentioned. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dennehy. And Mr. Zulus?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. On item 15C, the approval of, the request for approval of CARES Act appropriation. Finance Committee has met twice with, recently with, first with members of the School Committee in a joint meeting in the School Department, and then second just recently with members of the School Department and one School Committee member. They, there wasn't a, there wasn't a posting for the entire School Committee. At the, at the end of the, after discussion of the, for appropriation of the CARES Act funding at the first meeting, the request was made to Mr. Dennehy and Ms. Pevall, our Finance Director, Superintendent Jet, and Assistant Superintendent Dexter to, to meet and try to present and present to our joint committees a consensus view on how to allocate the remaining CARES Act funding. At our subsequent meeting, just this past week, I believe, I don't, I don't, I don't remember if it was the end of last week or Arthur helped me out. Was it Monday? I can't remember.
They all run together.
Anyway, it was, it was very, it was very recent. It's within the last week. Again, that was attended by Superintendent Jet, Assistant Superintendent Dexter, and one School Committee Member, Beverly Ross Denny. And so the consensus recommendation was that of the remaining CARES Act funds, $100,000 be allocated or appropriated for additional COVID testing. And that would provide, and Mr. Dennehy can fill this in, but I believe that would provide for four COVID testing days, free COVID testing days. $7,500 for a PPE trailer to store PPE for future issues that may arise with respect to contagious diseases. $50,000 for personal protective equipment, PPE, to plan and to have in store in the event we have a, another contagious disease pandemic. $100,000 to the School Department for Chromebooks to assist with their training to help the students who were burdened and have been burdened during the COVID period to help with that, with the, to help get them back up to speed and, and continue that training. And $17,500, $502 for additional school COVID-related technology items. That leaves approximately $1,500, I believe, of CARES funding that hasn't been appropriated, if that's approved by this Board. And there was some suggestion in our last Finance Committee that schools may have some ideas for that additional $1,500. So, so the recommendation of, of the Finance Committee, this Board is just as I said, to approve $100,000 for additional COVID testing, $7,500 for a PP, Personal Protective Equipment, trailer to store PPE for a future contagious disease issue. $50,000 for that PPE to, to leave us in good shape for any kind of future issue. And $100,000 to the School Department for Chromebooks, $17,502 to the School Department for other COVID-related technology items.
One second.
That's our recommendation, and so I guess I'll make it in the form of a motion.
I assume you recommend, use of recommendation.
So.
Okay, so motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion, Mr. Zulus?
I just want to, I just want to ask Mr. Dennehy if I got it all right.
You, you are correct, and it was within the last week. We did.
Okay, okay.
Okay, well, it sounds like a good plan to me. And any comments or questions for the Finance Committee?
Thank you.
Second, Ms. Collins. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're lucky to have these monies. They come at a great time.
Yeah, and thank you for working with the schools to come up with the consensus plan. That's, that's good news for the town. Mr. Dennehy?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. So that, that's the 2.434 million that we received in CARES. So I think we can all agree it was used very wisely. And we're looking forward to, you know, thinking forward with, with supplying PPE and the trailer and everybody that was involved on the town and school side to come up with very useful purposes of this very needed funding. So hopefully, it continues as well as it began, and, and we'll, we'll be more prepared for, for what brings us next. So, thank you.
Okay, and, and thank you, I think, also, as in order to, not only Mr. Dennehy, but Karen Preval and Amy Dexter on the school side for all of the work they've been putting in to get all of these requests processed and approvals in place. And we have a good plan for the balance of the funds.
And Superintendent Jet as well.
And Superintendent Jet, great. Okay, the whole team, thank you to everyone. Let's vote on the motion. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And Ms. Conlon, yes. Okay, thank you very much to the Finance Committee. Item 16 is an update on the East Milton Deck Project. It's about 8:30. We have several more items on our agenda, so we're going to try to go a little more quickly. I'm going to go to Mr. Dennehy for an update on the Deck Project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Three, three updates, I think, which is very relevant. Anyone who's traveled through the square understands the congestion that's going on with the construction project. Again, this is the phase, they're trying to finish up Phase Three of, of, of four phases, the fourth phase being the deckwork itself. So the three takeaways tonight is all of the new traffic signal infrastructure is in place. There's conduit, electrical conduit work that's going on. That's part of the construction work going on down there. They anticipate that being completed in the next couple of weeks. What commuters, residents, and passers-throughs can, can see is over time, the old. the old traffic signalization will be retired and the new traffic signalization will be turned on piece, in piecemeal. As the new stuff is turned on, the other equipment will be, will be taken down. So that's a process and a very good step with, with respect to, to traffic flow through the square. And that should improve as we work our way through the fall. The second piece is we continue to work with Mastod and Howard Stein Hudson. Again, people recall, we, we had them in about a month ago, and we come up with recommendations about parking. We're continuing to work with them about reducing the number of parking spots lost. And that can, that conversation continues, and some of the work that's going on specifically near the apron of the fire station currently will accommodate some of those spots that we previously thought we were going to lose. And lastly, based on the work that's taking place now, and there is a lot of activity down there, the preliminary estimate is to do the paving work, which is, as we all know, Granite Ave and, and other of the surrounding streets within that perimeter have seen better days. So that, that work is, is scheduled for later this fall, and then they will get into phase four after that with the deck. So it, it, I will apologize on behalf of the town because it is a struggle at certain times of the day to get through there. But just know that this is, this is part of the completion process for phase three, where we turn the traffic signals over to a better place and, and get our infrastructure in place before we can start paving. The conversation regarding paving was, the contractor would prefer to do that at night. It is much less inconvenient for people that use the square, so that's something that we'll, I'll talk about at a later meeting. But we're heading in the right direction and they're looking for a late, late fall paving, so that, that's the most recent update that I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dennehy for the update, and on behalf of the board, I want to thank Senator Walter Timmeltie, who we had reached out to to ask for any assistance and advocacy that he may be able to provide for the town with Mastod and the Baker Administration, and he has done so and is continuing to do so. So thank you to Senator Timmeltie for his efforts on behalf of the town with the state officials. We appreciate that, and I'm, you know, we'll, we'll have more to come at a future meeting, hopefully on the 8th of September. And as soon as we have some additional information that we can report on this project, we will do so, but that is the current update. So thank you to Mr. Dennehy and thank you to Senator Timmeltie. Any questions or comments before we move on to our next agenda item? Okay, seeing none to another good news story, which is the Yulin Rink, and I'm going to go to Mr. Dennehy on that one to introduce it as well.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, so I am here this evening seeking the board's approval on two items. So after long negotiations and many meetings with our state electeds, most notably Senator Timmeltie and Hannah Buntic, his dutiful aide, and several, several conversations since I sat in the chair at Town Hall in November of 2016. The town have been working on one-year permits with the, the State Department of Conservation and Recreation to be the permit holder of Yulin Rink. If you recall, this time last year, we were approved another one-year extension for that permit with co-permittee Kane 176 Corporation, who is the manager of the rink. So tonight I bring forward to this board for approval both the Yulin Rink Permit Agreement, which is a three-year extension, which would bring us through, if my math is correct, 2024, August of 2024, and with a two-year option after that, which would bring us to August of 2026. So the second piece I bring forward to you is the Yulin Management Contract with Kane 176 Corporation, which would allow Mr. Kevin Burchell, who has been co-permittee on the permit down there to manage the rink on behalf of the town. So I'm willing to answer any questions you may have and talk through the process. But again, this is a collective effort, Peter McNulty from Murphy Hesse Tumi Lahane, who is their link, lease and, and property expert, has vetted this with both Town Council, sorry, with Council for DCR, Mr. DeRosa, and Mr. Norton, who is Council for Kane 176 Corporation. So this is a great story, again, I've said it before, Milton Youth Hockey is, is the largest youth hockey program in the state with the largest girls' program in the state, so very necessary asset. And again, there's, there's other nonprofit youth organizations that have used that rink for years through this permit. Score Boston, Bay State Skating, to name a few, including other youth hockey programs, Braintree Youth Hockey, Westwood Youth Hockey, Norwood Youth Hockey, it's, it's truly a community asset. And again, I want to thank Mr. Burchell for his work last year and hopefully going forward for the, the next three-plus years.
Okay, that's a good report, thank you, Mr. Dennehy, Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize Town Administrator Mike Dennehy to sign on behalf of the Select Board the Rink Operations Permit Intermanagement and Operations Agreement of the Max School and Memorial Rink each for a three-year term.
Made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Zulus?
Madam Chair, just very quickly, I think it's important to acknowledge Mr. Dennehy's efforts over the several-year period to work toward this good solution, and, and, and as Mr. Dennehy mentioned, Senator Timmeltie's efforts even longer than that to stabilize and improve skating, skating facility for the residents of Milton.
Yeah, three years is better than doing this every year, so, so this is good, good news, thank you, Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes, thank you, we have now a series of appointments, starting with the Board of Registros.
I move to reappoint Jean Peterson of 9th Row Street and Mary Center for 123 Indian Spring Road for the Registros for the year terms ending in August 2024.
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Norfolk County Advisory Board.
Madam Chair, I'll move to reappoint Joseph Redden of 49 Grafton Avenue to the Norfolk County Advisory Board for a one-year term ending in August 2022.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wells, Mr. Dennehy has his hand raised, is it on this side of Mr. Dennehy?
Yes, I'll, I'll wait, I'll wait till you, you discuss, I just want to add comment.
Well, if they were in discussion, the motion's been made and seconded, so. Mr. Dennehy?
Okay, yeah, I want to, I want to thank Mr. Redden for his, his work with the county. The county's been in a little bit of transition, they have a new director now, John Cronin, who takes over from Mike Mullin. So Joe has been a huge conduit for the town to the county during, both during this transition and, 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 and at non-transitory time. So I, I highly recommend Mr. Redden for this reappointment.
A different John Cronin than your predecessor, whom we all know and love, right?
Yes, ironically, I had Mr. Cronin in Mr. Cronin's room last Thursday, so actually, he used it for a photo op, so thank you to both, Mr. Cronin.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to reappoint Joseph Redden, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you, the Education Fund Committee.
I move to appoint Superintendent Schools James F. Jet, Barbara Wright and Stephanie O'Keefe, Milton Public Schools and President James M. Calliffe to the Education Fund Committee for a three-year term ending in August 2024.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells? Mr. Wells, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry, Madam Chair, yes.
Ms. Collins? And myself, yes, Ms. Collins, we're having a little trouble with your audio, I, I saw you say yes, but I didn't hear it, but.
Thank you for letting me know.
Okay, we also have appointments of our Town Planning Director to several committees, including a position as the Fair Housing Officer. If anyone would like to make that motion.
I move to appoint the appointment of the Town Planning Director Tim Zarinsky to the Traffic Commission, Milton Landy Committee, Fair Housing Officer, Sign Review Committee, Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, with the term ending July 2022. Thank you, Mr. Zarinsky, that's an awful lot on top of everything else.
There is, seconded by Mr. Doyle, thank you, yes, Mr. Wells?
So I just have one question, does this mean we're moving, I thought he, Mike Dennehy, Tim had decided to have Allison represent him on the Landy Committee, who's, and she's been doing the yeoman's part of the work there. Is this representing a change?
I will check with Jen McCullar, I, yeah, but I know Allison had taken over that role.
Right.
Unbelievable work during the planning department transition, but I can follow up with that, Mr. Wells.
Madam Chair, I just asked if we'd just delay that aspect of it, I, I'm fine with the rest of it.
Do you want to offer that as a friendly amendment to Ms. Collins to, to delete or to not appoint, withdraw the appointment to the Milton Landy Committee tonight, and we can take that up at a future meeting?
That's what I would do if that's, if that's okay with you, Melinda.
Ms. Collins, you're muted.
I accept.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Sorry, I'm muted, yes.
And myself, yes, thank you, and thanks for that catch. All right, the last one is the Local Emergency Planning Committee, we've already appointed a number of people, we have some additional appointments this evening.
I'll move to reappoint Melinda Ortega, Gerard Paul, Christopher Graziozo, Jay Hackett, Paul Hopkins, and Shane Brendanburn to the Local Emergency Planning Committee for a one-year term ending in July 2022.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion?
Coming up on the 20th anniversary, 9/11, this is, this will be the 20 years that committee, that committee was established like on the 13th or the 14th of 2001.
Okay, served the town well, I know, especially from that big snowstorm a few years ago and many other events. Okay, Mr., let's vote on the motion, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, we're moving right along, we have item 19 is second part of the Affordable Housing Update by Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I believe we, you're in the, as you said, the second half, which is shorter than the first, I'm sure everyone will be glad. But we, this is structured around the strategy from Housing Production Plan, just to remind everyone. And so far, we've covered zoning and production, now we're on capacity building and preservation. So as far as capacity building goes, you know, as everyone knows, the town's structural financial deficit has made it difficult to capitalize the Affordable Housing Trust. But we passed, Town Meeting passed Community Preservation at the February 22nd, 2021, at the Town Meeting. A minimum of 10% of CPA funds must be devoted to affordable housing production and preservation, so that's really exciting. And, and everyone involved should really pat themselves on the back, this is going to be a long-term benefit to the town. So as communications is something that we've also been working on, Donia Raphael, who is our resident representative to the Housing Committee, was asked to create a communications plan, and topics include informing people about the lotteries for affordable ownership units, and general, and general communications to keep housing on top of mind, understood and valued by our community. And that includes some social media and web design, so we'll be taking that up at our next meeting. As far as the Housing Production Plan, Mr. Zarinsky, Ms. Quinn and Ms. Raphael all teamed up to put on a presentation that is up on M A T V's website. And anyone who's curious about the, the Housing Production Plan, it's a great primer. And I highly encourage people to, to look for that. And I believe there's a link on our, our Housing Production, or on, on the Housing Committee page, but we should make sure it's there and also on the Affordable Housing Trust page. So unfair housing and community engagement, I'd also like to note that Mr. Zarinsky, our Director of Planning, Community Engagement, secured technical grants from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council in the next iteration of the Town's Fair Housing Committee, and also from the Boston Society of Architects for a community-wide visioning project in the area of Blue Hills Parkway, Blue Hill Avenue, Brush Hill. He also wrote a memo supporting the request for an earmark for pre-development funds for a town-owned parcel on Brush Hill Road, which may be suitable for an MP TA community location. And that's part of, it's a provision in the housing choice legislation passed over the winter. And it's required for the town to receive state grants for certain types of, of projects going forward. And that earmark is, of course, with the state legislature. The Housing Committee will discuss its role regarding community engagement with the planning department on these things going forward. And this summer, the Equity and Justice for All Advisory Committee Housing Group presented to the trustees of Affordable Housing and the Housing Committee members and advised on a variety of policies, including local preference, which is a recent topic that was explored by the trustees and the Housing Committee, and will continue meeting to discuss other important topics related to housing and economic equity. And finally, on preservation, during the pandemic, the trustees and housing members along with this board supported the use of home funds to provide emergency rental assistance to qualified residents. And we'll be researching the use of home funds, which are federal funds that we get as part of a consortium, because we, we're we're not, now I forgot the term, you know, we're, we're not a community that gets block grants, but we are eligible for some funds, you know, from the federal government as part of this home consortium. So, so we'll be looking into that for a small repair grant program. And finally, the trustees and housing members supported the concept of a shared housing services office, which our board also endorsed. And most of the affordable units in Milton are privately owned by nonprofits that track their own compliance, but the number of new units is going to be increasing, we are looking at, at our, our own projects in town. And we really don't have the capacity to do the administration on those kinds of, of units. So this would be a, a great boon and also open up the possibility of future projects, because we would have this new administrative capacity. So thank you very much for your attention and, and also everyone's support for the housing.
Well, thank you for that very comprehensive report over the course of two meetings to Ms. Collins. And if it's not already posted to our website, which it, it may be, we, we should, we should get the report up online, because it's, it really shows all of the efforts being made on the housing front. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Collins, does anyone have a comment or a question for Ms. Collins? Okay, seeing none, the next, we're going to defer item 20, so item 21 is a request from the Eustace Estate for a one-day liquor license. If anyone would like to make a motion.
I will move to approve a one-day liquor license for Historic New England for a mass opera fundraiser at the Eustace Estate on September 11th, 2021.
I'll second the motion, okay, any discussion, if not, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. Next is a series of meeting minutes for meetings in June, July and August. And Ms. Stewart and Mr. Zulus have been working on the minutes, thank you to both for their efforts. Mr. Zulus?
Madam Chair, just.
Yes.
A couple of brief nits on, on one of the sets of minutes that have been circulated. And they are both on the August 3rd minutes that were circulated. In the second to last line on the first page, there's, there was a stray "was", which is about a third of the way through the line, so that we delete. And then at the end of the minutes, where the executive session is referenced, the executive session motion came at approximately 10:00. session is referenced, the executive session motion came at approximately ten oh two P M. And at that time, the board adjourned from open session not to return to open session. So, so in addition. So.
Mr. Wells, I think we're getting some back.
Yeah, sorry, that was me. I just, I got that.
Okay, thank you.
So, so I would propose to say, if this, if this is appropriate, in the second line down, after it says voted five zero by roll call two, to add to adjourn the open session and enter executive session.
That's August third, Madam Chair. That was
That's right.
I believe it was August third. Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the August third minutes subject to the edits just articulated by Mr. Zulus.
Okay, do we have a second on that? All in favor, Mr. Doyle, you're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. That's August third.
And then if, if, if everyone's comfortable, I, I'll make a motion en masse for all of these, except for August sixth. You haven't received August sixth.
Okay.
For the other, I believe, nine sets of minutes, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from June ninth, June seventeenth, June nineteenth, June twenty-third, July second, July twelfth, July fourteenth, July twenty, July twenty-eighth, and August eleventh, as written.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in, any discussion, any changes? All in favor, Mr. Doyle? Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you very much. Twenty-two, we're on to the town administrators' report number twenty-three. Mr. Dennehy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one item to report today. So we received an official document, official email from Secretary of State Galvin's office with respect to Census twenty twenty. So two things, the re-precincting portion of this will have to come at a future agenda item between now and, and October. So probably one of the two September meetings, either the eighth or the twenty-second, would be great. But essentially, Milton's population grew by six percent in the last ten years from twenty-seven thousand zero zero three officially to twenty-eight thousand six three zero. So we received that document today. Town Clerk, Madam Clerk, Galvin is working with a team, including, once again, aforementioned G I S, stalwart Alan Bishop to re-precinct Milton from a voting perspective. So we can expect that at a, at a future board meeting. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. For the chair's report, the only thing I wanted to report on was just to remind the public about the board's September eleventh twenty anniversary observance. And we, as everyone knows, we're going to be having two events on September ninth, which is a Thursday. We're going to have a blood mobile sponsored by the Dana Farber and Brigham and Women's Hospital at Town Hall, out in the parking lot in front of Town Hall, from twelve until six thirty P M. And donors should make an appointment. We're going to be putting out a lot of information on this over the next few days. They, they will accept some walk-ins if, if, if time permits, but it, the idea would be to register through a link that will be going out on the notice. And donors are going to receive a special T-shirt commemorating the nine eleven anniversary, as well as the Kraft Family Blood Donor Center. On September tenth, which is a Friday evening, we've agreed to, this board has already voted to hold a vigil to observe the events of September eleventh. On Friday evening rather than on Saturday morning, we've been working with the clergy, Mr. Doyle, Mr. Dennehy, and Susie Stewart, and I have been working, had one meeting with the clergy. They are working on a draft of the program. We've, we've had some additional information this week to add to the program. So the clergy did ask us to change the time to six o'clock P M from seven o'clock P M because of the Jewish Sabbath and the sun, sun setting shortly after seven. So the time has been changed from seven P M to six P M on Friday evening, September tenth. And we are going to be putting out more information about the vigil this week, but it's co-sponsored by the, the board of the town in the clergy association. And we also, Mr. Dennehy, through the town clerk's office, received an inquiry from two students at Milton High School who are also working on a Project Three Fifty-One way to recognize September eleventh, which is going to be some memorial stones or bricks that are being painted and would be placed at Town Hall. So there's, we, we only learned about that today, but there's more information to come, and we're hoping to wrap that into the vigil recognition as well. So I'll ask Mr. Doyle or Mr. Dennehy or Ms. Stewart if there's anything additional that we should report out. But the idea would be to put this out through social media and the email distribution in the next day or two, to encourage people, especially to start signing up for the blood mobile.
The only thing that I would add, Madam Chair, if I may, is the recognition of Susie Stewart, the executive assistant to the town administrator for conceiving the idea of the blood mobile and doing all of the very hard legwork and making that a reality for us.
Yes, I agree. I'll second that, Arthur. Thank you to Susie Stewart. Okay, do we have any members' reports? Mr. Doyle?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Mr. Zulus?
No report, Madam Chair.
Ms. Collins? Mr. Wells?
No report, Madam Chair.
Okay, public comment response? We did not have any public comment this evening? Future agenda items? Anyone? Our next meeting would be September eighth and also September twenty-second. So those are the upcoming meeting dates. Community happenings? Any members have any community happenings to mention this evening?
You already did, September eleventh.
Yeah, and we encourage people to, to also watch on television the vigil. The vigil will be broadcast live by M A T V. So if you're, you know, if you're depending on where COVID is in a, in a couple of weeks, if people are not comfortable coming out to the Town Hall, to the Town Green, to the gazebo for the vigilant person, they will have an option of watching it on television. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Wells. Okay, no community happenings. Item twenty-nine, we added to our agenda yesterday. We received notice of an open meeting law complaint filed by Dr. Cindy Christensen yesterday, the twenty-fourth of August. So in, after consulting with town council, we put it on the agenda for this evening. Everyone has a copy of the complaint. It relates to meeting minutes and an email that Dr. Christian and, Dr. Christensen had sent to Mr. Zulus and myself on August tenth, asking for meeting minutes. I believe all of them have been approved tonight. They have been provided today to Dr. Christensen, so she has the drafts of the minutes. And, and with that change that was made tonight on the August third minutes, we voted on the others. So they've now all, so the drafts that have been provided today are the final drafts, other than the change that was discussed a short while ago on the August third meeting minutes. So if anyone has any discussion, we please feel free to weigh in. If not, we can direct town council, authorize town council to file a response to the open meeting law complaint on our behalf.
And make that a motion, Madam Chair, of authorized town council to file a response to the open meeting complaint.
Okay, making that as a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Collins. Any discussion on the motion, Mr. Zulus?
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, I, you know, we, we've got an email a couple of weeks ago asking for the drafts, and it took us a little while to figure out who is going to provide them and, and how we're going to do it. But we provided them all, so I don't really think there's anything, anything there. But I guess, I guess town council will have to go ahead and prepare a response.
Yeah, and I guess I'll just add to that, usually the public records requests have it handled through the Gov Q and A system, which is the database, maybe for lack of a better word, this, the technology system that's in use to handle public records requests. My understanding had been that it was being handled that way, but that was clearly wrong. So we have provided the drafts of the minutes to Dr. Christensen today. And there is a reference, there's a question, really, I think, that if, you know, wasn't an intentional violation, certainly was not an intentional violation. It's just a matter of oversight and board thinking that the request was being handled the way all the other public records requests are being handled through the, through the Gov Q and A system. But the request was actually not submitted that way. It was submitted through email, so.
I don't even think it's a violation. I guess we'll find out.
Okay, does anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Okay, then we have a motion made and seconded. All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you. We've deferred our executive session, so we will adjourn the select board meeting now, and we are going to call to order at nine oh one. Governor Stoughton.
I'll move to adjourn the select.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. We made it seconded. Do we have, well, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, you're on mute. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so we're adjourned. We're now calling to order the governor, a meeting of the Governor Stoughton trustees at nine oh one, and we have one item on the agenda, which is a discussion of a request for proposals for potential affordable housing development on the four remaining acres at Town Farm. We have, I see they're already being moved up to panels. We have a couple of people with us, Julie Kramer of the Affordable Housing, the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, and Kathleen O'Donnell, who is a member of the planning board. I know you've both been here for a couple of hours waiting, so thank you very much for your patience. And Ms. Collins is going to update the board on this item.
Yes, so I'll, I'll begin, and then I'll let Julie and Kathleen chime in. I think Julie has something to share directly after. But just a very brief history on the, these four acres are really about three and a half buildable acres left over from the sale to the actually, Mr. Zulus, Chair, and, and myself, and town council, Friag. Well, actually, he wasn't available that day. He had something else to do. But, but we started the process with the Attorney General's Office to, to see if it would be possible, under the will of Governor Stoughton, to produce affordable housing, to do a program for affordable housing on those four acres. And it has taken the Attorney General's Office, understandably, some time. They have an internal process they need to go through, and there were a lot of questions around the, the trust and how the, the funds are used and how our, our disbursement mechanism through Milton Residents Fund and to other entities like Freddie House. So that, that took a while to get through that, and Ms. Kramer had devised the program that, that we used in order to educate the Attorney General's Office about how affordable housing works, because it's not something that, that they typically deal with. And she was able to explain also a bit about the development process. So Kevin Friag and I just received news last week on a call from Jonathan Green from the Attorney General's Office that they would like us to put out an R F P, decide upon a project, and bring it back. And I guess it would likely go through probate, but they would support us in our efforts in order to demonstrate that affordable housing is an appropriate use under, underneath, or under, under the will, or to at least, you know, expand. I don't, I don't, we're not talking really, I don't know how you say it, a seapray or sideprey. But, but they, they would support as much as happened, as Ms. Collins knows previously with the A G's office, supporting the town in that, the other transaction so that, that's where we are. And Ms. Kramer, I feel free to ask questions, but then Ms. Kramer, Ms. Kramer's going to talk to us a little bit about the R F P process.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Before we do that, is there anyone from the board who has any questions just on the communication with the A G's office? Thank you for that update, Ms. Collins.
Yeah, I mean,
Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think that's great news. I think it's a recognition of reality. And, and, you know, if, if, if they're willing to support us on this, that, that really opens the, the door, I think, appropriately. So to use funding from the Governor Stoughton Trust for affordable housing. So, so I think it's, I think it's great news. And, you know, it's a recognition of the reality, and I'm, I'm cheered that, that that's happened.
Okay, all right, thank you to Julie Kramer. Julie, you're, you're on mute.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, I, I spoke to Melinda a little bit about some sort of recent R F Ps that have been out there in the last few months, some of which the company I work for has responded to, and one of which we haven't. And I just think they give a really great base for folks here to sort of review and get comfortable with how each one of them sort of approached this, you know, the idea of utilizing town-owned land for affordable housing. And each one of them sort of has their own sort of nuances that I think, you know, relate back to this, the parcel of land we're discussing today. The town of Hudson had a parcel, I think it, it came out about three months ago. They did something somewhat unique in that they formed a neighborhood. They called it the Reuse Committee, because they were reusing the land for affordable housing. And the, you know, the neighbors sort of formulated, helped to formulate the R F P and put into place certain criteria or certain design features that they wanted to see, that they felt comfortable. You know, that would, would be part of, part and parcel of the R F P that was sent out to the development community. You know, that they were looking for a hundred percent, sixty percent A M I or lower. They are a CPA community, and they do have, they've actually met their S H I, believe it or not, that they're at about eleven percent. And the R F P included, you know, a significant amount of, you know, development guidelines, and even to the point of citing where they would like to see, you know, the, the buildings be placed, the scale. And it was just a really, unfortunately, the, the organization I'm with didn't, didn't get the development rights, but it, it was a really great process. And if you'd like to go on to the town of Hudson's website, you can see the, the winning proposal as well as the R F P, and a lot of information on that particular one. The town of Wellfleet is currently evaluating proposals for a property, a town-owned parcel for about forty-six rental units. It's a, it's a little bit bigger site. It's about six acres. And they are trying again to have a deeper affordability than would have been potentially the minimum of a, of a forty B proposal. They're looking for about eighty-five percent of the units to be affordable to households making eighty percent or lower of the area meaning income. And again, there's design guidelines, there's planning studies. They also had a task force that was involved in the creation of this R F P. Part, part of this R F P, for, for those of you who know the Cape, you know, realize that there's a lot of sensitivity around and sewer. And so this task force also worked to find a proper design for a septic system that could also handle the, the affordable units that would be built here. That was done sort of on a parallel track. So, you know, they, they didn't want to wait. They wanted to move them both along on a set, on a parallel path. And then the final one is one for the town of Province Town. And they are looking again for a little deeper affordability. It's a town-owned land. It's a smaller acreage. It's about one point three acres. And again, they're looking at about forty units, forty to forty-four units. So some of the things that all of these have in, in common are forty units or more. And, you know, that is sort of a And, you know, that is sort of a sweet spot for developers of affordable housing, because it does allow for enough units to make a viable project, to sort of use all of the tools and all of the funding source, resources, sort of maximize their benefits to the project. So I, I just think if anyone wants to dig a little deeper on this, all of this is public information, and it's all online. And you could even dig down and, and look at some of the proposals. Wellfleet had three proposals, those are all up online. Provincetown, I think, had four proposals, and again, those are all online.
Ms. Collins.
Madam Chair, if, if we might invite Kathleen O'Donnell to, to say a few words as well.
Yes, Ms. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the rest of the board. Just as a disclosure, I am a real estate attorney. I represent about ten or twelve Affordable Housing Trusts in other towns. And I currently have three RFPs out for smaller projects than what Julie has been describing. But, and I come to this Governor Stoughton situation a little bit late, but I am on the Housing Committee with Chair Collins to sort of figure out what has been the sort of ideas for what could possibly be put out at the Governor Stoughton property. Many of my clients do the pre-development work. As Ms. Kramer pointed out, obviously, in cities and towns on the Cape, you need to know that you have septic because they don't have sewer. That's also the case with the three that I have in Lincoln, Weston, Stowe, have had issues with making sure that we can provide septic, the qualified septic. That's not necessarily a situation that we have here on this property, but a lot of that pre-development work is done. We do that some of the times through the Affordable Housing Trust with its CPA funds to do the sort of site work, pre-development work, to separate out, to sort of decide, decide what you can possibly build on the property. So before you go out for an RFP, you, you know, you obviously wouldn't be asking for forty units if you can only get three. And so it seems to me that we should be doing some prep work as to what would be potential for that parcels, those parcels. And, and potentially, that would be something that, as I said, could be done through the Affordable Housing Trust or through the town itself. And I do have examples of the RFPs for those smaller projects, and I can send those along to Chair Collins for the Housing Committee consideration. And I'm happy to ask any questions about the process, if anybody has any.
Okay, well, thank, thank you all, Ms. Collins, Ms. Kramer, and Ms. O'Donnell, for a lot of good information and a, a good update. Ms. Collins and I spoke briefly, we, obviously, we want to have some public process around this discussion, and it's, it's been before the AG, you've been looking for a while for some guidance from the AG, so it's, it's been a while since we've had a discussion at a meeting relating to the Town Farm property. Does, does any member of the board have a question or a comment, and then maybe we can get Ms. Collins' thoughts on the public process? Mr. Wells. Mr. Wells, you're on mute.
So my, my question is, I know that we had had prior meetings with the, with Julie and, and some members of her committee, we had looked at a some potential ideas if we could do this. We also have the issue of the historical buildings that are there. You know, you, 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 just as I have been advocates all along of trying to do whatever we could do to save them and use them going forward, we, when I hear forty units, I believe the prior design we looked at goes to something much smaller, like Kathleen describes. Am I, are we a couple steps behind here and there, abandoning it out and going to like a forty unit proposal? Or are we still thinking in the preservation historic terms as part of making this project a reality?
Ms. Collins, you look like you want to address that.
Thank you. So the, the concepts we've, we've been working with were around possibly preserving the Alms House, I, I believe, and, and the Pest House. And, and then doing some sort of replication of sort of the, you know, with, with other buildings. So, so we were thinking something on, on a scale that, that was more in the range of, of forty. Of course, things, things are different now, and to Ms. O'Donnell's point, we have a little legwork to do, right? So we have, we have a little pre-development work to do, and we have to develop RFP, which will, will have a scoring system. One of the things that I didn't mention was, of course, the AG's office is, you know, now, as Mr. Zulus said, they're on board now, because everybody realizes how, how dire a situation housing is in, in the Commonwealth. And so the more affordability we can get, the better. And so that's that really delicate balancing act of, you know, yes, it's what can you put on the land, but also, given what you can put on the land, what's economically feasible? And so sort of our, the, the team that we were thinking of assembling was both Ms. Kramer and Ms. O'Donnell, and then Cheryl Taggias. And the, the planning, you know, our planning staff as sort of the, along with Town Council and, and Mike Kelly, who's our permanent officer, is sort of the, the first level team. And I think that they, they may want to, want to come up with someone like Cliff Bomer, who did a, did a very high-level concept plan on, for, for the parcel. And as you know, Mr. Bomer's been working for the town quite a bit as our peer consultant on architecture. So, so that, that was a first thought, that they would, they would start on, on an RFP and, and then loop back and consult with, with our board, or if the board would like to pass it first through before the Housing Trust. And I, I think I captured that pretty well. Julie, did, did I get that? Yeah. So.
Mr. Wells, did you have a follow-up?
No, I'm just, as you know, Madam Chair, I think that that is critical to the success of this project, just given the unique geographic layout of that four acres. The, the limited access by Governor Stone, which I believe is a private way, which is why the road sits the way it does. I think that, and again, the whole historic preservation of this, those buildings have been there for a long time. So that's, I think that makes it a much easier just from a community perspective, thing of success versus going in and having to level anything else there. There are still those who, as you know, Madam Chair, would a lot drive, just the whole leveling of those thirty acres, that was a very contentious fight for this board when, when they fought, when that was passed, so. Just my thoughts, that's it. Thank you, Melinda. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Collins.
Madam Chair, and the, the other thing, as Ms. Kramer said, the, the public engagement is, is really important, so we'll need to do some careful thinking, because we, we do want people to be involved. And I, I think those, the effort to help people understand how they can weigh in and mitigate any sort of potential adverse effects, you know, how far should setbacks be, you know, things along those lines, what can we preserve even around landscape, those things. It's all really important. We want to be problem-solving partners. So I, I'm not sure the board would like us to come back with a more concrete proposal and timeline. Or if you would just like us to get started and you'd go back.
Let me ask, just to clarify then, Ms. Collins, you're proposing with the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Committee together work on this? You, you mentioned a few names, but would it be held at those committee meetings? That would be where the public meetings would be to start.
Right, that, that's a, that's a, that's a good question. I, I, I more saw the Affordable Housing Trust taking a lead on this, but Julie, what, what are you, what were your thoughts?
I, I mean, either way, you know, we have been meeting jointly, but we don't, you know, we don't have to hold this discussion jointly. We could certainly handle this through the Affordable Housing Trust, and, you know, the first one I mentioned in, in the Town of Hudson, it was actually, the RFP was issued by the Affordable Housing Trust.
Right, well, that, that's a, that's a really good question. I'm sure the Housing Committee would be really happy to participate. I, I'm just, I just don't want us, us to step on the Affordable Housing Trusts, you know, into, into purview. So, so it could, it could be both of us.
Can I just add, can I just add something to that?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. O'Donnell.
In many cases, it's the Housing Trust because the property has been transferred to the Housing Trust. I mean, as you know, the idea behind the Housing Trusts, they have more flexibility than the town to, to, you know, decide to, to buy, sell, and all that sort of stuff. So the issue that we have here is that this property isn't actually owned by the town. Is it my understanding it's owned by the Governor Stoughton trustees? And a precondition to doing anything is the AG, as I understand it, wants to see an RFP before they'll even give permission for what, you know, for the ultimate disposition. So.
They want a project.
Yeah, so, so that's an issue, because it's sort of like the cart, like way before the horse. In that you don't know what project you want to have, what kind of project you want to have, before the AG will issue its opinion, it's a, it's permission. And so you'd be going through all the expense, and the developer would be going through all the expense of designing a project and not knowing whether the AG is going to sign off on it. Which is crazy.
Couldn't, you know, through the RFP, couldn't we say, you know, here's the minimum, there's the maximum? And not, and, and, and do some site, you know, do a little bit of site planning, so that he understands, you know, what kind of project we're, we're looking at, what we're aiming for? I mean, I don't think he needs to see exactly where the buildings are situated, or the precise number of units, or the precise, no, he needs the guardrails, right?
Right, that, that's a, that's a good way of putting it, Julie. And I, I mean, one, one of the things that the AG's office will work with us on is language that goes in the RFP that, that that lets people know that this is part of the process. I mean, this is very similar to what happened with Colty. Mike, did you want to say something?
I, I was just gonna, I, I was just gonna, you know, just, I, I don't think we need to use the word permission. It's nice that they agree with us. It's nice that they agree with us in terms of the interpretation of the will. I don't think it's a permissive situation, but it, but it's good to have everyone rowing in the same direction. Just, I just want to make clear that we're the trustees, and we have an obligation to act under the law, and the extent that the AG's office agrees with us and as to what the law is, that's a good thing.
Yeah, and, and I think Kathleen O'Donnell is correct, that in this case, it's the Governor Stone trustees that would issue any RFP rather than the Affordable Housing Trust, but I, I thought what I was hearing both Julie Kramer and Melinda Collins proposing was that that might be where some of the, this preliminary prep work, Kathleen, that you described would get done and might get vetted, and there'd be some, there'd be some public process there, and then I think we have to have public process at, at our Governor Stoughton meetings as well. So, so for any of the butters or the, the larger neighborhood, there'd be an opportunity for people to, you know, to weigh in on, on what's being discussed, and, and maybe even help shape the parameters.
Right, that, exactly. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the board? Or from Ms. Kramer or Ms. O'Donnell?
Well, I just think it's very exciting to actually see some, some movement on this. There's been so much talk about that property for, for like forever. And, and, you know, and I do actually have some experience with four farms, because we had one in Westport that we turned over to the trustees of reservation. So I've actually done some research on that, and did an article for REBIE before it. But the, as I said, I think the major issue is trying to decide, as Julie said, what the guardrails are, what we, what we can put out there. In the score sheet, you know, when we, you sort of look at the proposals that come in, that's where you would be developing, you know, your, your, your point system, just sort of said, more points are given for historic preservation, more points are given for this, more points are given for that. And that would be part of our discussion, you know, the discussion that, at all levels of this operation.
So I guess, just in terms of next steps, so Ms. Collins mentioned Cheryl Taggias, who's a member of the Planning Board, but is not on the Housing Committee of the Affordable Housing Trust. You know, maybe it's a matter of inviting her, it's some of the, whether it's a joint meeting or just the AHT, the Affordable Housing Trust, or the Housing Committee, whatever we decide upon, maybe it's a matter of inviting the planning staff, you know, someone like Cheryl to the meetings, so that there's a public meeting, and there may be other guests that are part of the process, but the, but anything is taking place at a public meeting.
Yes, and, and the reason that, that, that we'd like Cheryl Taggias to participate is that she, she was involved early on in these discussions, and she actually helped with the production of the Housing Production Plan, and as the, the Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee and her, her experience in architecture, she'll, she just will be a real asset there.
Yeah, I know, I think Cheryl would be great to add to the process here, and would contribute a lot. Mr. Doyle, did you? I, I'm not sure, I, I thought I saw, you may have raised your hand. No, okay. Anyone else, anything this evening? So Ms. Collins, do we, do the, do the Housing Trust and the Housing Committee want to maybe take this up at a meeting, figure out what the logistics might be for the, for the prep work? And then come back with a report at our next meeting? Does that sound, our, our meeting is September the eighth, I don't know if that's too soon.
Well, we'll see what we can do. I think we'll start with the planning staff, you know, getting them up to speed, and, and then we'll, we'll see about either the, just the Affordable Housing Trust or, or all of us meeting.
If somebody could let me know what we have for information on the site already, acreage and that sort of stuff, I can start to put together a draft RFP based on the ones that I've got for the other towns that I've worked with. And then we'd know what we sort of need to be looking at. I think that would be helpful.
Okay, and then I think, obviously, we're going to want a town council involved in this as well.
Right.
I think, I think Ms. Collins and Town Council have been talking about an RFP, in, in what the process there might be.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I think we, we, I, I think I'd like to connect maybe with Tim and then, and Kevin together, and, and then we'll sort of go out from there, everybody.
Okay, so it sounds like we're going to have perhaps a Governor Stoughton meeting on September the eighth with the Select Board meeting, if, unless Ms. Collins lets us know that it's, nothing is ready at that time. But if the planning staff is starting to work, and the Housing Committee, the Affordable Housing Trust, take it up before the eighth, we may be able to take this up on that agenda, if not the twenty-second. Any other comments this evening before we adjourn? Okay, seeing or in hearing none? Thank you to Julie Kramer and Kathleen O'Donnell for waiting a couple of hours to join us this evening, and thank you to everyone for, for tonight's meeting. We, we had three meetings last week, and one this week, and it's the end of the summer, it's usually a quiet period, so thanks to everyone on the board and the staff for all of the commitment to all these important issues that are going on in town. It is exciting to see something potentially happening at the Governor Stoughton property. If there's nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Zulus.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, everyone.